Thank you. I hereby open the work session of the Springfield Planning Commission meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Salazar?
Present.
Commissioner Thompson?
Present.
Commissioner Schmunk?
Here.
Commissioner Weber?
Thank you. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? I would like to ask the members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. This is a meeting where the public may attend but not provide comment. There will be opportunities to address the planning commission later tonight in our regular meeting, which follows this work session at approximately 7:00 PM, maybe like 7:15 tonight. Could we have the agenda item, the Development Code text amendments?
Yes, thanks Chair. I'm just going to provide a brief overview of the application this evening. This is an interesting and somewhat unusual proposal because it's not coming from staff or the city council. This is a third-party proposal, so it is a coming from the private sector application to amend the Development Code, which is somewhat unusual but is provided for in our Development Code for textual amendments to comprehensive plans and in this case, the adopted Development Code. So staff will be providing a fairly succinct overview of some of the issues and the applicant has a far more detailed explanation and narrative about the reasoning and rationale for requesting these text amendments. So there will be a presentation made by the applicant this evening during the, I guess, during the public hearing portion. So, so to familiarize commissioners with the campus industrial district, it's in the area that we commonly refer to as the North Gateway area of Springfield. The entire extent of campus industrial zoning is depicted on the diagram there. It's a kind of a purple with stippled pattern. And it incorporates areas that may be familiar to many Springfielders, including the Royal Caribbean site, the Peace Health Laboratories, which was formerly Sony Disc Manufacturing briefly, and then its current iteration as Peace Health Laboratories. There's Pacific Source, there's Justina, the Latter Day Saints Temple is being constructed in this area. And so there are a number of existing and also vacant portions of the campus industrial district in Springfield, which was created around 1992. So it's about 30 years old. It's seen some successes and some, I guess, failure to reach optimal potential with economic conditions changing and that sort of thing. So one of the sites. I'm just going to advance the slide here if it'll let me, which it does not. Locked out. It's not letting me advance the slide. Can you manually advance it for me? Since like, for whatever reason, it did it before, but it wouldn't let me. Yeah, okay. So the proposed textual amendments are specific to business parks in the campus industrial district. And if I can bring up the slide, there are currently two. Thanks, Sarah. Bring that one up. Doesn't want to show. There we go. There are currently two business parks that have been, have been constructed and that are operating. The first is the applicant's site, which is referred to as the Hawes Building. It's a multi-story, multi-tenant office-type building on International Way, which is central, the rectangular green parcel which is shown on the diagram. The other portion is on the, kind of the southwestern edge near the campus, well, I guess would be, sorry, the Community Commercial District, International Way, near Gateway Street. That's the McKenzie Business Park, which is an earlier business park and kind of typical what you would expect, which is a multi-tenant, kind of light industrial-type building for some headquarters, for local contractors. There's some other agencies that have offices and so on in there. So the proposal is to allow for a wider range of office tenancies within business parks. So it would currently affect only these two sites. It could potentially affect any new business parks in the campus industrial districts, should any be developed. Whether or not there will be new business parks in this district under current economic conditions remains to be seen. One of the fails, if you want to call it a fail-safe or mitigative measure that the applicant is proposing is to reintroduce a 40% maximum acreage attributed to business parks in the, in the campus industrial district. That was a measurement factor that had been implemented when the business parks were first considered. And so there was the overall acreage of campus industrial was calculated and then each site, its acreage attributed to the overall percentage of, of business parks. Right now, that percentage is far less than 40%. I'm not even certain, I haven't run the math, to see if it even could occur under the vacant sites that are remaining within campus industrial. Some are constrained with floodplain. Another purpose of the proposed text amendments is to broaden the types of offices, as I mentioned. Right now, there is a scarcity of medical offices in the vicinity of the Peace Health, Sacred Heart, Riverbend Campus. For whatever reason, Peace Health has not developed their own campus. There are a lot of vacant parcels around that site. And so medical professionals are gravitating to this area, as we've seen recently with the LifePoint Hospital, and that's the pink site, which was recently re-designated and rezoned to accommodate medical services use. One of the limitations also in the campus industrial district is it precludes public-facing offices, offices that generally serve the public, which does not necessarily mean public is going to be visiting the site, but public agencies, Lane County Agencies, Public Health, FEMA, IRS, ODOT, you know, these are agencies that generally serve the public. They have been reluctant to seek any type of tenancy in any campus industrial buildings because of the text in the Development Code, which precludes public-facing agencies from, from locating there. It does not necessarily mean that they're going to be generating a lot of traffic or customers, so to speak. So, so this is essentially the, captures the essence of these proposed text amendments. A couple of just observations by staff. These would not facilitate the recently announced hospitals that are proposed in this area. The Lane County and Peace Health have jointly announced a potential project in, as yet unannexed territory, in, in the campus industrial district. This code amendment would facilitate medical offices and clinics, which are defined in the code. Hospitals have a different definition. They have different characteristics. They would not fall within the parameters. So a business park with two buildings would not be falling under the guise of the hospitals that were recently announced as prospective projects in this area. So that has created some testimony and feedback you'll receive this evening. I also want to point out, and I'll, I'll share this also in the public hearing portion, there are provisions in the city's development code to bring this forward to the planning commissions of both the county and the city of Springfield. The city, the Lane County, it's at their discretion. They have been very busy with a suite of, and like a series, a sequential series of Development Code text amendments for annexations, for a variety of other things from the city of Springfield. While this will have to be implemented through joint adoption with the Board of Commissioners and the city council, the Lane County decided to not participate primarily because of workload, the number of meetings that they've been participating in. They have this at their discretion. And ultimately, any Development Code text that is adopted will not affect unincorporated territories. All of the properties would have to be annexed and go through a site plan approval process in order to take advantage of any of the changes to the text. So it, although it may be adopted in county code eventually, it, it really will not affect any unincorporated territory from a practical standpoint. So, for example, any sites that are sought for a hospital and some type of rezoning and re-designation to accommodate medical uses for a hospital would have to be annexed first and then go through an exercise in comprehensive plan amendment and zone change, which the commission has already faced previously for the LifePoint Hospital. So I just wanted to make those observations because there is some testimony you'll be looking at this evening with some objectors that have pointed out that city is not following its process. This is going to be kind of a stealthy way of accommodating medical facilities, which were coincidentally announced just after the applicant had submitted their, their specific Development Code text amendments, which are unique to their site but would apply to other sites potentially. So if you have any questions, I'm sure you'll get more information this evening and the staff will bring up some other issues, including some of the testimony that have been provided just in advance of this meeting. So we just reviewed it. I'm not, I don't even know if commissioners have had a chance to read it because it arrived very late, but there's an opportunity, staff feels, to be able to review the information and potentially revisit this at a, at a second meeting. But we can talk about that and it's going to be up to the commission to determine whether a continuance and extension of the public hearing may be warranted this evening.
Thank you, Andy. Are there any questions commissioners have of staff regarding this? Commissioner Salazar?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I think that, just one question. I think I'll have more questions when we get to the regular session, but for the purposes of this work session, I think one piece that you mentioned, I think, is appropriate for, for this work session is just wanting more clarity on, you mentioned that any action will eventually have to be approved by the, even though the Lane County Planning Commission has, at their discretion, decided not to jointly meet around this item, this item would eventually go to the Lane County Board of Commissioners. I'm just curious how it can go to the Lane County Board of Commissioners without going through the Lane County Planning Commission first?
In this case, the planning commission for the city of Springfield will be making a recommendation to both bodies. So the, I believe that the county acknowledges that the recommendation of the city's planning commission would be perhaps, I wouldn't say the more informed decision, but it would be more applicable because it will not have any bearing on, on incorporated territory that they might have purview. So that, I believe that's the reason, is that they feel comfortable that, after seeing the proposal, that it, it does not have substantial impact on, on the county and therefore they will, they will co-adopt but do not need to co-recommend.
Thanks, Andy. That's helpful context.
Commissioner Schmunk?
Yeah, I won't be able to be here for the public meeting, but I do want to, trying to understand, first of all, the difference between campus and, and, and business park. Doesn't seem to be a whole lot of difference. Is that, I mean?
Correct. The, the intent of a business park would be to have like, potentially, in this case, it's a single building, but it could be multiple buildings that would have multiple tenants as opposed to one contiguous building with one tenant. So it's, it has a, I guess, you know, a research and development park-type atmosphere. It does, it's not conspicuously different than the other types of development in the area because they all have to go through the same design and site planning standards.
So, so the campus is a, is an ability to make these cohesive or work together?
Correct.
So the proposal, my, my concern is, is that you start mixing what you were calling, I forget the term you used, but when the, when the, either the public or, you know, the tenants, those, the, the type of things that might take a, the public. You know, I guess I'd have no problem with putting both those in here, but it seems like they should be separated physically so that the, the public is not subjected to the type of transportation that the industrial park might have. So you understand my question? I mean, is that, I mean, how do you handle that?
Well, I guess site design is one way to handle that. And there are, I guess, the overall intent is to not have an outward appearance of industrial, like manufacturing. So a Richardson Sports, all of their activities are contained within the building itself. Even all of their shipping and everything is, is kind of out of the public eye, so to speak. So the intent is that even if there are customers or the public arriving, it will not be conspicuously different than a building where there's employees arriving and parking. So there may be multiple tenants, but it doesn't take over the similarities of like a gateway shopping area where there's a lot of stop and go, a lot of quick trip type of, you know, convenience store type, fast food type of, of feeling to things. The intent would be to have primarily it as a destination for, and mostly as an employment center. It may have a secondary ability to serve customers, but that would be a lesser proportion of the overall kind of use and characteristics of the buildings itself would be offices. And offices receive walk-in traffic from time to time. They might have deliveries, that sort of thing, but it's not, you know, a busy strip mall type of an environment where there'd be constant come and go type of traffic. And that's the intent, is to, is to keep that, that flavor and that atmosphere.
Okay, and this, this, this proposed change doesn't change that?
Correct. Yeah, that, the intent is to not change the characteristics of the overall district, but to allow for tenancies where this particular applicant is, is facing the inability to fill their office space because there are limitations on the types of offices that could go in there. So that's really the reason. It's an economic reason that they have a partially to mostly vacant building. And so they want to expand upon the opportunity to allow for more tenants to come in. And tenants are not comfortable coming in because of the provisions of the Development Code appear to preclude certain types of offices and certain agencies and certain types of professionals from locating there. And so that's sort of the bottom line. And I, and you will be able to review this, should, should this meeting go beyond tonight and we have to reconvene. You will be able to review the applicant's presentation that will be made during the public hearing. And then hopefully, the, all the commissioners, if we end up reconvening at a different date, will be able to kind of get the better gist of the reasoning and rationale for this, which is not coming from staff. It's coming from a property owner that's looking to get some help in keeping things viable in this area.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions from commissioners? All right. Thank you. Good catch, though. All right, well then. If there's no further questions, we'll adjourn during the work session. I hereby open the regular meeting of the Springfield Planning Commission. If we could have a roll call, please?
Sure. Commissioner Rhodes? Absent. Commissioner Buck?
Present.
Commissioner Salazar?
Present.
Commissioner Thompson?
Present.
Commissioner Schmunk? Absent. And Commissioner Weber?
Present.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Okay, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Are we going to approve the minutes of August 6th tonight? Are we prepared to do that, Sarah? All right, are there any corrections to the minutes as published in the packet? Okay, hearing none. If there are no corrections, the minutes of the August 6th, 2024 session are approved. All right. Business from the audience. We will now take business from the audience. This is the time in our agenda for the public to provide any testimony on any topic relevant to the planning commission, not otherwise on our agenda. For those who may be online, do we have anybody online, Sarah?
No, we do not, and neither do we have any cards. We have a couple people for the public hearing that are interested in testifying, but not now.
Chair Buck, we actually, do you have somebody attending online?
I don't see a raised hand.
But if they're attending, we have to read this.
Yes, absolutely. I'm so sorry.
I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute until you're called to provide public testimony. If you'd like to speak, please use the raised hand feature on Zoom or press star nine if joining by phone. If you're here in person, please pull out a request to speak card and present it to the planning commission assistant. When called upon to speak, please state your name and mailing address. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Do we have any cards, Sarah?
We have neither cards nor is the person attending as an attendee have a raised hand, so no.
Okay. Can we have the agenda item then, the Development Code text amendments?
Excuse me, Chair. This is Rebecca Dorman, filling in as the city attorney this evening. May I read the legislative procedural statement before we move on to staff?
Absolutely. Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you so much. Tonight's public hearing is for a legislative land use decision. A legislative land use decision typically involves the adoption of new policy that applies to a large area or group of people rather than the application of existing general standards to a single tract of land. The strict notice and process requirements that apply to quasi-judicial land use decisions do not apply to legislative land use decisions. A copy of the procedure for tonight's legislative hearing and copies of the staff report have been posted on SpringfieldOregonSpeaks.org. The criteria for adoption of Development Code amendments are in Springfield Development Code, Section 5.6.115. Any person with an interest in the proposed code changes may offer relevant oral or written testimony or both. Following the planning commission hearing, the commission will make a recommendation to the city council whether to adopt or not adopt the proposed code amendments or whether to adopt them with changes. The city council will hold its own public hearing on the proposed amendments. Any comments submitted to the planning commission will be provided to the city council. Any comments submitted to the city too late for planning commission consideration will be included in the record provided to the city council. Demonstrations from the audience are not, are not, are prohibited. Comments from the audience or comments from the phone or online that are out of turn will not be part of the record. Chair, it is now appropriate to move forward with this staff presentation and ask if any commissioner wishes to declare any potential or actual conflict of interest regarding the proposed code amendments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rebecca. Are there? Want to, as we open the public hearing, I'd like to ask commissioners to disclose any conflicts of interest or bias. Should we do this through a roll call?
I'll start with you, Chair Buck.
No actual conflicts of interest, potential conflicts of interest of being a landowner in Springfield and being a licensed insurance agent doing business in the area.
Commissioner Salazar?
I have no potential conflicts of interest, no ex parte contacts, and no bias. Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
No conflicts of interest, thank you.
Commissioner Weber?
No conflicts of interest. All right. Andy, I believe we're ready for your presentation.
Sure, thank you. I'll reiterate some of the information that provided at the work session. This slide shows the distribution of campus industrial zoning in the city of Springfield.
Can I, hold up. Sarah, can you share that on the presentation so that people online can see that as well? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to show in the purple stippling pattern, this is the area we refer to, staff and Springfield residents often refer to as the North Gateway area of Springfield. The campus industrial district was originally developed about 1992 and some of the early anchor tenants of this area included the Sony Disc Manufacturing Facility, which was fairly short-lived and evolved into the Peace Health Laboratories, Royal Caribbean, which is unfortunately shuttered now. Pacific Source has taken over the Semantik Building. And so there are other agencies and corporate offices in that area, which include Justina, the Latter Day Saints Temple, and there's another variety of other agencies in that area. Recently, a portion of this area kind of south-central was re-designated and rezoned to medical services to accommodate LifePoint Hospital, and that's the pink portion you see kind of in the center of the area of campus industrial. So portions of it have been, I guess, lost over time a little bit. The areas in question, these Development Code text amendments are specific to business parks. And there are two existing business parks within the campus industrial district. The first is the relatively rectangular parcel out of north-central. That is the applicant's parcel. This particular Development Code text amendment is being advanced by a third party. It is not originating with either staff or council or another agency, which is somewhat unusual, but our Development Code does provide for that. So what you'll hear this evening is a kind of an overview by staff and then a more detailed presentation by the applicant as to the need and the reasoning rationale for this, this code text amendment. There's a McKenzie Gateway Business Park, which is kind of on the southwestern edge. Both of these are multi-tenant buildings. The McKenzie Gateway one is a multi-building, multi-tenant facility. The applicant's site is a multi-story, multi-tenant office-type building, referred to commonly as the Hawes Building. Originally, it was developed as a business park for Hawes Financial Group and now has office space that's available. And the applicant is facing difficulty leasing the space because of the, some of the limitations and constraints that the business park Development Code language has currently. To summarize the proposed text amendments, the applicant is looking to expand and clarify as to the type of offices and potentially medical clinics that could be allowable in in business parks, which could include their site as well as the other existing business park site and any other future business parks that may be developed. Whether or not there are any future business parks that will be developed under current economic conditions, I guess, remains to be seen. And they would have to develop and prepare a site plan, no different than any other type of development in this area. This would allow for public-facing agencies to locate and also medical professionals. Currently, medical uses are prohibited and offices that generally serve the public also are precluded, which does not necessarily mean that they would be generating foot traffic or visitors or customers to the site. FEMA is an agency, the Internal Revenue Service, Lane County Public Health, there are other agencies that have a public arm or public aspect, but they're administrative in nature. Oregon Department of Human Services also have served the public generally, but they need administrative office space. And so this is an opportunity to expand the potential lease or less ease that would be in business parks, including the applicant's site. The other aspect of business parks that the applicant is looking to reintroduce is previously there was a 40% area limitation for business parks in the overall kind of global Campus Industrial District area. That was removed with code amendments that came subsequent to its initial kind of implementation. The city was maintaining an acreage inventory of sites that had been utilized as business parks. Interestingly, one of the business parks was essentially dissolved when the Latter Day Saints Temple replatted a defunct business park. Only one of the five sites was actually built. And so it's no longer really a business park because only one corporate office located there. The rest of the former Liberty Business Park was amalgamated into one and consolidated into a site for the Latter Day Saints Temple. So there's actually been a reduction in acreage that could be attributed to business parks in this Campus Industrial area. I would note that in your packet, there is a legislative version of the text amendments. Staff has identified one additional, we'll call it friendly amendment. There's a reference to the transportation, to transplan, which is no longer applicable. It's obsolete. Instead, it's the Springfield Transportation System Plan. And so that is an additional amendment that staff has introduced in your copy this evening. It should have absolutely no bearing on any of the details of the proposed text amendments that the applicant is forwarding this evening for consideration. Both the applicant's legal counsel as well as the City Attorney's Office and staff have reviewed these these text, proposed text amendments. And it is staff's view that these are relatively surgical in nature, they're very specific amendments, and have therefore somewhat limited scope and scale and impact. The applicant did submit a transportation analysis that would outline the potential impacts of the Development Code text amendments to their site specifically, because it would allow for additional types of uses potentially to be brought into their site. However, it does not apply globally to the Campus Industrial District because there are vacant sites and the nature of the development on those sites are as yet unknown. And as each site develops, they would be responsible for doing their own transportation analysis. So there has been some comments and testimony provided that the transportation analysis was inadequate or that the respondents didn't have time to review it or weren't able to perhaps digest it. However, in this case, it has a very limited scope. It's specific to the applicant's proposal, because that would be the most immediate change, would be their site where they have vacant space that could potentially be leased. This essentially concludes staff's presentation. I would note that the applicants here this evening, they're intending to make a more detailed presentation. So we're co-piloting, I guess you could say, this presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions. I guess one other thing to acknowledge the testimony that's been provided this evening, and some came very late, just prior to this meeting, there have been requests to continue the public hearing, to hold the record open. Staff is certainly amenable to that. It's at the discretion of the Planning Commission. Some of the observations that have been leveled against staff included the lack of participation by the County Planning Commission. The County Planning Commission, at their discretion, can either choose to participate or not. They chose not to participate. That does not have any bearing on the fact that it will require co-adoption by the Lane County Board of Commissioners and the City Council. So there will be a co-adoption of these code amendments. I believe, and I'm just speaking from my own perspective, that the series of Development Code text amendments that were adopted by the county and through co-review with the Springfield Planning Commission had more bearing on unincorporated areas. In this case, a site would have to be within the city limits for any of this to be applicable. So while it may appear in county code, it would not apply to any unincorporated sites. There will not be any unincorporated Campus Industrial sites developing with business parks. They would have to be annexed. And so that is, I believe, one of the reasons for the county to use its discretion and not choose to participate this evening. They will be participating at the elected officials' and adoption point. Therefore, the recommendation of the Springfield Planning Commission will be to both the Board of Commissioners and the Springfield City Council. Finally, one of the other observations that you find in the testimony this evening regarding what, I guess, is coincidental in time, but not in intent, and that is recent announcement by Peace Health and Lane County about a potential hospitals co-locating in the Campus Industrial District area, currently unincorporated property, currently zoned Campus Industrial. These proposed Development Code text amendments would not facilitate hospitals locating in the Campus Industrial District. That was one option that had been looked at previously is, would be to change provisions of the Development Code to allow for a greater range of uses overall, including medical facilities. That did not occur. That's the reason for the LifePoint Hospital to go through a fairly lengthy exercise to do a comprehensive plan amendment and zone change. That would be required with any other site if a hospital is proposed. And therefore, we'd go again to potentially the Planning Commission and the City Council for code, comprehensive plan amendment and zone change and then a site plan. The council may also be reviewing an annexation in advance of that as well. So I want to kind of outline that this is not, this would not facilitate some type of stealth action that would allow for a major hospital facility to suddenly appear in this area. So that is deliberately part of this to limit the scope and aspect of the coded, sorry, the Development Code text amendments. Clinics, offices are defined. Hospitals are also defined in the Development Code, and they have far greater, I guess, they have a far greater and more complex type of association than an office, so to speak. So I just wanted to, I guess, summarize some of the testimony that you'll be reviewing this evening. So staff would recommend that the public hearing and public record be held open to the next meeting. There's certainly no rush to get this through. And I think from staff and the applicant's perspective, transparency is absolutely fine. There may be additional opportunity for staff to respond more specifically to issues raised by respondents this evening and may come in verbal testimony as well, so. If you have any questions, let me know. Otherwise, I'll defer to the, I guess, the applicant.
Thank you, Andy. Do any commissioners have any questions, further questions for Andy? All right. I will now open the public hearing regarding the Development Code text amendments. Please keep yourself on mute until you're called to provide public testimony. If you'd like to speak, please use the raised hand feature on Zoom or press nine if joining by phone. If you're here in person, please fill out a request to speak card and present it to the Planning Commission Assistant. On call to speak, please state your name and mailing address, and please keep your comments to three minutes. At this point, do we have any? I believe the applicant has a presentation, and I believe this is the point where we would invite that, the applicant, to come and present that. Is that correct? Yes, the applicant has no time limitation. So yeah, whenever you're ready to present. Thank you.
Can you go? I think we have one slide before that. There we go. Great. And am I doing this or are you? Ah, excellent. Whoops. If I, my fingers are, oh, I can't go backwards. I can only go forwards. Hello, commissioners. My name is Andre Phelps. I'm with Andre Phelps Law. I have with me Teresa Bishow. She's with Bishow Consulting. And we represent the applicant in this legislative proposal. And we just wanted to thank everybody, especially staff and counsel, city counsel, or legal counsel for consulting with us these last few months to get us to this point, so we can try and find some solution to the issue and really improve some of the economic vitality of the Campus Industrial District. So I also want to recognize there's another important event happening tonight, a national event, so I know we all want to get going, so we're going to make this as short as possible. And also, I want to point out that the staff's report and the briefing memo, they're very thorough. I think we've gone through a lot already tonight, so we'll try and keep this, again, as short as possible. So what we're proposing is really a narrow scope of code amendments. As staff said, a surgical addressing of just business parks, business parks as a use inside of the Campus Industrial District. This would really just allow for a wider diversity of tendencies within business parks and clarifies the types of offices that are permitted. As was mentioned earlier, there's been some, a little bit of confusion about what is permitted, what's not permitted in business parks. They're sort of an interesting beast, we can say. So I just wanted to start off by bringing your attention to the purpose of the Campus Industrial District. If you look at Exhibit A, page one, it's really intended to provide opportunities for diversification of the local economy by offering prime sites in a campus environment for large-scale light manufacturing firms as well as research and development complexes, emphasizing modern technology and employing skilled workers in a family wage jobs. So what's being addressed here are really the business park definition, which is just being updated a little bit, and then business park standards, and then the use categories. These code amendments, again, I'll reiterate, only impact business parks. The, we've already seen this map before. And I think done a good job of identifying where this is located, so we'll just move forward. The impetus for these code amendments really are change in economic conditions. And I think we've done a really good job of addressing that in our application materials. So as we all know, even before COVID, there was a trend towards remote work, sort of this be-work model. But definitely since post-COVID world, we have quite a decline in demand for large office spaces. So there are also zoning constraints for business parks. And what that alludes to is that business parks, when they were first brought into the code, were really the broadest use allowed inside of the Campus Industrial District. For instance, they were the only use that that permitted all primary, secondary, and accessory uses. They also allowed for some other uses that weren't allowed, such as educational facilities. So really, it was this broad use. And so then on top of that, it had this 40%. At that point, it had a 40% restriction. And that was, I'm imagining, because there was this envisioning that business parks would be very popular, right? That didn't really come to fruition. And then in 2020, there were code updates. Those code updates were supposed to be policy-neutral and also to target, to increase target industries like medical services. But because, as I mentioned earlier, business parks are sort of an interesting beast, they kind of, my opinion is they got a little bit lost in that translation. So what happened is that some uses, like the educational facilities, are no longer allowed. Laboratory, medical laboratories, that sort of thing. And so really what business parks can offer is sort of this high-quality office space and that are in conjunction in this area of medical services. So what we're providing here is the Hawes Business Park located at 400 International Way as a case study. This is the building. It's over 82,000 square feet of leasable space. It's beautifully landscaped. It's more, it has more than required parking. It's a really lovely building. Great entryway, great atrium. It's very, it's a very nice business space. But as we have heard from before, this site was approved in 2007. Approved as a corporate headquarters with secondary uses. It was finished construction and 100% occupied by 2008 with a mix of office tenants, retail tenants, and it included a large restaurant and coffee shop. But unfortunately, in this post-COVID world, at the post-2020 code updates, what we are seeing is there's a high vacancy rate. And there's just been difficulty in filling some of the tendencies there. And a lot of that is due to uncertainty with the code plus on top of the economic changes. So it is our belief that these code amendments will stimulate the economic vitality of the area. They will clarify, add flexibility, and modernize the business park uses. They will allow uses that may serve the public and allow target industries such as medical clinics. And I just want to touch on sort of, we have identified specifically as a use, office and clinics. And those, as they are defined under the Commercial District. And I just want to read that to you so you have an idea of what that constitutes. So office and clinic uses include, but not limited to, a wide range of business and professional offices and medical clinics and offices. Examples include doctor, dentist, chiropractor, optometrist, research, processing, and laboratory services. And again, this addition of this would just increase the diversity of office uses in the area. So the code amendments do not affect sort of this campus environment, which is really what, as was brought up earlier, what the Campus Industrial Area is supposed to exemplify, so it maintains all the standards of landscaping, pedestrian amenities. It continues to prohibit auto-oriented uses, like drive-up restaurants and car washes. It continues to prohibit non-employment uses such as storage facilities, and it also continues to prohibit any marijuana businesses. So in our application, So in our application, we found that all the approval criteria are met, and the findings support that essentially. So there's a lot of information that was provided in our application and the findings. Please ask any questions later, but I'll kind of go through these quickly. So we've conformance to the Metro Plan and Springfield Comprehensive Plan, conformance to the Gateway Refinement Plan, no apparent conflicts with applicable state statutes. Again, this is very narrow in scope. Importantly, consistency with statewide planning goals, Goal 9, in that it removes some zoning barriers to target industries such as medical clinics, and so promotes economic vitality. And then also Goal 12, transportation. Our, we, our clients hired Sando Engineering, and they performed a transportation planning rule analysis, a TPR, and found that this proposal complies with Goal 12 and that there was no significant adverse impact on traffic. You can read, that's a long report. You can read that at your leisure. And to that end, just wanted to point out that these business, the business parks, they're located in this, in this area that would very easily serve the public in any way. It's this multimodal international way, has sidewalks, bike paths, and MX service. So that sort of concludes our presentation. I did want to just state that there were some letters in opposition that were submitted right before the hearing. I've just very briefly been able to read them. And I didn't see much. I think, I think part of the issue here is that, because it's a legislative process, that it came to some neighbors' attention sort of late. And also in conjunction with the proposal of a behavioral health hospital and stabilization center. And I think staff did a very good job explaining that that's not going, that's not part of this proposal and that this, that some of the issues that are raised is that we're, that this is really broadening the uses. And it is, in some way, broadening them. It's also bringing them up to, to modernizing them. And really, what's, what's part of this area is going to be moving towards more medical uses. So offices associated with that, clinics, what we were saying, some governmental offices, that sort of thing. So I think we've touched on this 40% cap that we're reinstating. Really, that's to help with any concerns about transportation, how it might proliferate throughout this district, which, as we, there's not a lot of vacant space there already, so probably not an issue. And let's see if there was anything else. There was a comment that this eliminates all use limitations and protections. We don't really see that. We think that this is, again, very narrow application. So, thank you. Did you want to add anything, Teresa? Okay.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you guys have any questions for the applicant? Commissioners, how's that?
Thank you, Chair. Just have one question. So why a code, a development code amendment rather than a comprehensive plan amendment and zone change for your, for the specific lot? Why make it applicable to the entire campus industrial zone?
Well, yeah, Teresa can do that.
Hello, good evening. My name is Teresa Bisho. And that's a great question. Initially, we submitted a formal interpretation request with the City of Springfield to see if perhaps we were interpreting the code too narrowly. And we suggested, through a pretty thorough process, maybe we can get flexibility by a different interpretation. Well, that didn't work. The code, as plainly read, we were informed, no, these particular uses, like a chiropractor's office, would not be permitted. And we essentially worked with the commercial real estate broker who's been trying to actively lease the building. Tell us who you've heard has been denied the ability to locate in the building. So we did try interpretation unsuccessfully. So then we thought, well, our client has a business park. It's a single lot. Let's do the heavy lift of a plan amendment and a zone change. And we actually submitted, and it's still in the queue. We haven't withdrawn it. There is a submitted application for commercial zoning. Let's call it what it is. It looks like an office building. Can we zone it commercial? The ground floor has had non-office uses, such as a restaurant and coffee shop. So maybe the right zone is community commercial, and it'd be red. That wasn't received very well in that it gave the appearance that we were trying to perhaps have too many retail uses. You know, the building could be knocked down, and you'd get another big box retail. There were different standards in the commercial zone. Fewer landscape requirements, fewer requirements for pedestrian amenities. I believe less open space required. Because remember, this is a campus industrial area. So there were changes to the standards that being a developed property, they didn't need those changes. They already have, as you can see on your screen, a strong pedestrian amenities and some of the other things that make it feel like a campus. So we looked to staff and the city attorney and said, well, the other option is to amend the code. And believe me, it was very hard to keep our focus narrow because it's, there's a tendency to, well, why don't we just redo the whole campus industrial zone? No. Let's only address business parks and, you know, a few other things. So we really tried to make it a very narrow code amendment that would have limited application but would improve the economic vitality and enable other property owners in the future who wanted to propose a business park, who wanted to come in and have a diversity of office uses to benefit from it. So it's not site-specific. It is generally applied to any business park. But that's, this is our third time we've been trying to get to yes. And the positive outcome, if we can amend the code to address the constraints that currently exist for business parks. And if you look at the uses allowed within a business park, it's extremely limited, as we learned through this process. So that's the reason we're here. And we did try some other avenues. And we hope that you receive this favorably, so.
Thank you. Any other Commissioners?
Thank you, Chair. I think this was addressed already in the staff report to an extent, and you touched on it as well. I had a chance to review both of the comments we received in opposition to this pretty quickly. And a theme that I got, a theme that I got, I think from both the comments is that, you know, passage of this text amendment would allow for the potential to damage the original character of the business park. Could you just, I'd love to hear your feedback on your take on that. Could you just address that and provide a comment?
Yes, I mean, we did have the one slide that touched on that. So this does not affect any of the standards. If you go up. Right. Oh, I'm sorry. Which one is it? Maybe it's down. Yeah. I mean, I, there, yeah.
Code amendments will retain campus environment.
Yes. So, yeah, this is not changing any of the standards that will... So in no way will it change sort of the flavor of the area. So in that sense. I don't know if there's more.
No, I think that's the point. The property owners are not seeking to have different landscape standards, to have a different building height, to be allowed to do outdoor storage or to have chain-linked fences with barbed wire. You know, they're not trying to have it become a more heavy industrial area. What they're trying to do is economically make the business parks have a greater ability to maintain the economic vitality. If this building cannot be leased at a higher capacity, it will continue to degrade, and you will end up having blighted conditions. And I don't mean to, I don't want to come across threatening. I'm just saying the reality is the property owners of these business parks need to have enough flexibility with uses. They're not trying to avail themselves of not having to comply with stormwater standards or any of the standards. Those are all being kept. You know, this is about increasing and broadening the uses. And I will say, there are many uses in the Springfield Development Code that are still not being added to business parks. Andre mentioned about non-employment uses are still not allowed. So what you aren't seeing are residential treatment centers. No, we're not adding that use. We're not adding multifamily. We're not proposing to add hospitals. So uses that might generate more impacts or that would change it in a fundamental way from being a campus industrial area to being a residential area, that's, that's not what's being proposed.
Commissioner Weber, do you have any? So would this include retail of any type, or can it do that?
Yes, currently in business parks, they can have secondary uses that include restaurants and coffee shops. The problem is, the code says that generally don't serve the public. Because at one point in time, the business parks were perceived to be maybe larger sites with thousands of employees that would support the little coffee shop. As in the building that Pacific Source has, there's a cafeteria inside one of the buildings. And it primarily serves the employees. And you and I don't go have lunch there. Well, with the HAZ Business Park, given its scale, the people in the building can't support the ground-floor restaurant and coffee shop. So the use, in that case, the use isn't being added. We're allowing the use to serve the public so you and I can go have coffee there. So that, that's the key difference in that regard. And the square footage size limitation right now for a restaurant, I think it's 2,400 square feet. You know, there's a certain size limit, again, to try to have a diversity of small, more neighborhood-oriented, or in this case, it'd be, you know, employee, you know, doesn't have to get in their car to go drive somewhere to get, you know, their lunch. This removes some of those barriers by saying, no, it's not so much a certain maximum square feet of lease area. It's the overall percent of these called secondary uses is what's regulated. So you might have a 3,000-square-foot restaurant if the building has so much overall size. And nobody's going to monitor, are those customers employees from upstairs? Or are they someone who worked across the street or down the block? So.
Well, thank you very much for that.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm circling back here for a moment. The paragraph I read before that I skipped ahead here. I will now open the public hearing regarding the development code text amendments. Please remember to keep yourselves unmute until you're called to provide public testimony. If you'd like to speak, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom or press star nine if joining by phone. If you're here in person, please fill out a request to speak card and present it to the Planning Commission Assistant. When called upon to speak, please state your name and mailing address and keep your comments to three minutes. Chair, do we have any cards?
Yes, we do. And would, is it Andre Phillips? Oh, oh, okay, aha, you submitted a card. Okay. How about Ardell Wicks? Please come up. Yeah, you can have a seat. And I think there is a time limit. Chair, three minutes.
Three minutes.
My name is Ardell Wicks, and I am the Chief Financial Officer for Richardson Sports, located at 500 International Way in Springfield. In addition to my financial responsibilities for the company, I have responsibilities to oversee the Human Resources Department and the well-being of our employees. One of the reasons Richardson Sports selected our current location 10 years ago is that the campus industrial zoning provides an ideal location for us to work and conduct business. You may be interested to know that we recently completed a multimillion-dollar expansion at our facility here in Springfield to expand and provide more employment opportunities for people in our community. We currently employ approximately 400 workers at this facility. The unique restrictions in this property zone is what helped this neighborhood become the best business district in the Eugene-Springfield area. It is a great area to work in. Our employees enjoy the campus atmosphere and limited traffic flow, which allows for peaceful walks during lunch and breaks throughout the day. The HAZ companies have been very welcoming to us since we arrived in the area, and we've enjoyed a warm friendship over the years with them. Both companies want a vibrant and healthy economy and business district in Springfield. For this reason, we were very surprised to hear a couple of weeks ago about the requested text changes to the zoning regulations for this area. We didn't see it coming. Although some of the ideas and changes might be acceptable to us, we can't support something that is so general and broad. These changes add too much flexibility and open up numerous problem areas that would forever change the campus industrial zone that we know and love today. We appreciate you considering our concerns and ask for you to pause your decision on these changes for further discussion or deny the requested changes and ask the HAZ companies to submit a specific property, specific rezoning application. To discuss our specific concerns, I'd like to defer the remaining of my time to our attorney, Michael Gilardi. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Point of order. Do I get three minutes? Looks like it. Okay. For the record, my name is Michael Gilardi. I'm an attorney representing Richardson Sports. My law firm is Gilardi Law, and our address is 4710 Village Plaza Loop, Suite 165 in Eugene, 97401. I just want to tick through a few issues that are in the letter that we submitted. First issue is a procedural issue. As Mr. Wicks just said, you know, we just found out about this. A lot of the neighbors in the zone just found out about this. And so we're scrambling to figure out, what do these rules mean? And how could they affect the neighborhood? And, you know, don't mean to suggest that there was something nefarious that went on. Recognize the different, you know, formal notice procedures for different types of amendments. But I don't think it's good policy for the city to be working with one landowner on rules that are going to affect an entire neighborhood without consulting with the rest of the neighborhood, particularly when there's just a limited number of businesses in the neighborhood. I do think there is a legal issue with the procedure, which has been discussed a couple of times tonight. The Metro Plan does require that there be a joint session of the planet, of the City Planning Commission and the County Planning Commission. Now, I know that the city staff reached out to the county, and the county declined to participate, but I don't think they have the option to decline to participate. So we think that this proceeding has to be paused or continued to bring in the County Planning Commission. The second issue, which I think is really the core issue here, is whether these changes are consistent with the comprehensive planning that the city has done for this zone. Both recently and over a long period of time, you read the new Springfield Comprehensive Plan, it says that this is to be primarily a light industrial zone with, with corporate campus environment. The changes that are being proposed to the definition of a business park would stretch this way beyond a light industrial zone. It allows, as other folks have said, allows any kind of office, any kind of clinic, any kind of government facility, plus secondary uses such as retail uses that are open to the public. So that, that is quite a bit broader than a light industrial zone. And I appreciated the applicant's explanation of the different process that they've been through. Didn't realize that they had pursued a plan amendment, zone change. I'm curious as to why they don't think that's feasible, though, because Peace Health just did it down the street in the same zone with, within the last year. So it's certainly possible to rezone to the community commercial medical zone to cite clinics, which I know the applicant has said in its materials that it wants to cite clinics in this facility. Forty percent ruled not sure that it's workable, given the broadening of what is a business park. You could very easily have winners and losers with some sites being able to develop, some sites not being able to develop, depending on how that is interpreted. Again, goal 11 in the TIA has to cover the whole zone, not just the property.
End due, three minutes.
Sorry, do we have any further cards?
We have no further cards, and our one attendee does not have their hand raised. But if they'd like to speak, they should raise their hand now. And I do not see that they're raising their hand, so I think we don't have anyone else that wants to speak.
Do any Commissioners have questions for the, where's the public who testified tonight? No? I, I do. And then this could be to either, either Richardson Sports or Mr. Charter. I just kind of wanted to clarify. What I'm hearing you say is that you want, you're asking us to pause so that we can kind of explore this and work towards some mutually beneficial outcomes. That's what I'm hearing. It's not a yes or no. It's a, let's take a minute and see how we can meet the goals that Hoz is approaching. Okay. And then I think that the applicant mentioned that they'd, that they had not received, it wasn't, their initial efforts were not received well. So I think, you know, I'd like to see maybe that question of, who, who was it not received well by, explored further. So I'm not sure that you guys can speak to that, obviously, because you just heard about this. So I was assuming that during your initial testimony that this might have been a neighboring thing, but it sounds like maybe it wasn't received well by the city. Is, is that correct? Okay. All right, thanks for those clarifications. If there's no further questions for, for staff or, or the applicants from Commissioners?
So I think typically, Chair, we, the applicant has a chance to rebuttal after any public comment, so. I guess, is this the time for questions to staff for the applicant? Or do we allow time for rebuttal first?
I think we allow a time for rebuttal first, and then I think we go to questions for staff. Since we're in, we're looking to Christina. Our Assistant Attorney, who's on maternity leave, she's the one, she's the guru here. So did you guys, did the applicant have any rebuttals? She just wanted to respond at this time? Okay. Okay. Questions for staff? Commissioner Salazar?
Thank you, Chair. So Andy, I think just point of order. It sounds like there's some differing interpretations of the level of involvement needed by the Lane County Planning Commission. And I don't think we need a response in this meeting, but I think I would like to, to hold open the public hearing and the, the, the record to allow for, I think, I, I'd feel more comfortable moving forward if we had a little more clarity on, seeking clarity on, on if the Lane County Planning Commission's is needed for this discussion.
Any chance I could get you to make that into a motion?
I don't, I don't think we need a motion to hold open the public hearing, and we just, we not close it.
Yeah, I think you do, actually, because we need to continue it to a time and date certain.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
I don't think, I'm not quite ready yet until any hearing, if anybody else has any questions, or that's just my proposal.
No, I agree. I think we should get some more information, definitely, and... Yes, just that, get some more information to make it, to make a decision.
I agree and support keeping it open for further testimony and feedback from staff. Thank you.
I would concur with that. I would entertain a motion.
Sandy, you mentioned a time and date certain. Do we know the next time we'd be able to schedule a?
Sure. The next available meeting for the Planning Commission is November 19th. And I'd look to Andy, does that work for you and the applicant? And to be able to respond?
Absolutely. Staff typically builds in contingencies for the overall process, advancing this to eventually the decision-making bodies. And so bringing it back on the 19th does not adversely impact the applicant's schedule for this. We actually have, has, as of yet, do not have a joint meeting scheduled with the City Council and the Board of Commissioners. And I guess further to the question that was raised by Mr. Delardi and others, staff will identify the specific code citation, which it does allow for the city to bring it directly to the Springfield Planning Commission, and it is at the discretion of the Lane County Planning Commission, which obviously they exercise that discretion. So that's the reason it's solely going to Springfield Planning Commission. So other than timing, I don't know that the outcome would be any different if we were to try to involve the County Planning Commission, but that would be at your, at your choice.
Well, I appreciate that. I think that some of the value is just allowing some further conversation, kind of flush those things out. And from my perspective, if the result remains the same, that the county's not going to participate, then at least, hopefully, those discussions can happen, and it kind of, everybody can be on the same page. And also, you know, posing the question that, do they have the option? I mean, I think that, that posed a question, that question was posed tonight. And since this is, this is new, I'm just looking for the opportunity for everybody to have those conversations.
Absolutely. The follow-up staff report will incorporate all of the testimony that's been submitted and the summary of the verbal testimony as well, and then staff responses so that the commission can look to specific citations and identify, you know, where in code these provisions are made as applicable, and other responses to other more general questions about notification and that sort of thing.
So I'll just add that if you're looking at the 19th, you'd want to set the time at 7 o'clock or thereafter. That's when we schedule our public hearings.
Well, then, I'd like to make a motion to hold open the public record and the public hearing to November 19th at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Motion, second. Any, any further discussion? All right, can we have a roll call, Sandy?
Sure. Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Buck?
Aye.
And Commissioner Salazar?
Aye.
All right. The motion passes unanimously. And at that, and at this point, I believe, so that motion's passed to hold the record open. We will now hear any business from the Planning Commission, other reports of cancel actions. Has anybody prepared to report on councils tonight?
Chair, I had a report for, from the October 7th meeting of the City Council, and I will be prepared to provide it at the next meeting.
Fabulous. Any other business from the Planning Commission? Okay, no other business from the Planning Commission? I hereby adjourn the Planning Commission. Oh, yeah. Any business from the Development Public Works Department?
Sure, I'd like to provide a couple of updates on some outreach that is currently happening. One is for the Consolidated Plan, and that is the plan that we create every five years in conjunction with the City of Eugene as to how we will spend monies that we receive from HUD, the Housing and Urban Development Agency from the US government. So we're currently in the public comment period. This Friday, as part of the art walk at the museum, there will be displays explaining the Consolidated Plan. It identifies the strategies that we will be using to address the various issues around housing, economic development, addressing low-income livability issues and such. And then the Advisory Committee for that is holding a public hearing on Tuesday, December 10th at 2:00 PM. It's online, so you can get more information if you would like to participate. The second project I want to bring to your attention is for climate-friendly areas. So we have a new story map and survey on our website, which you can get to at the project page on Springfield Oregon Speaks. And we have three public events scheduled. One is at Roaring Rapids, which includes pizza on Tuesday, November 12th, from 4:30 to 6:30. And that's really targeting, in particular, the Glenwood area, because that's one of the proposed areas, but anybody is welcome to attend. And then at the library meeting room across the hall here on Thursday, November 14th, from 10:00 AM to noon over coffee. And then online on Tuesday, November 19th, from 4:30 to 6:00 as kind of a drop-in workshop type of thing. So encourage you to attend one of those events, or at least go onto the webpage to look at the story map and survey. And then we'll be gathering those results and bringing them to you to get a recommendation on which of our climate-friendly areas that we're looking at should be designated as such.
Thank you, Sandy. Does that conclude the, is it okay? With that, I adjourn the Planning Commission meeting.